It will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:06 PM on July 8th, 2021. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here.
Here.
And I have a love lady.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Jason Bailey.
Here.
And Mayor Shuff.
Here. We are all present. Pledge of allegiance. Ms. Love Lady, please do your honors.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, to the United States of America, to the Constitution of the One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you. Mayor report. Waste water treatment plant update. The headwork is nearly complete. And the, in a kind of a surprise series of events, the dredging process to remove all of the bio solids from the three ponds, that process is utilizing all of the liquids that are being discharged from the city into the ponds in real time. And so the city currently has no discharge whatsoever into the Olacaw Creek, which is a good thing. So of course it's short term until we, while the dredging is going on. But that was wreaking a little havoc on Bill's numbers when he was trying to calculate, doing his regular calculations on the effluent, the outfall going into the creek. Because when he's trying to divide by zero, he was getting kind of some wonky numbers. So anyway, he needs to talk, he was talking to ecology and they'll be fine with that because no discharge is better than some discharge. Anyway, moving on. Number two. On July, on July 22nd, there will be a public hearing by the city council regarding the extension of ordinance 2021-02, the manufactured homes. If you remember that it was a six month window each, every time we extended that. So this is just an extension to get us to the public hearing on August 19th, where the planning committee will have a hearing regarding the permanent regulations for manufactured homes. Number four, park work. The next meeting is July 21st. Ditch update. Work was done by the Vader Public Works to clear the 10th Street ditch vegetation. Our new temporary public works employee was down there working hard on that, clearing all that out. So hopefully you've all gotten a chance to take a look at that.
I did go look at it. Looks good. It just needs to be kind of dug out a little bit now where it drains better. But yeah, that's the first time I've seen it look like that in all the years I've been there.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. And then they, they started looking at the section of 9th Street there, excuse me, D Street as well. They're, they're talking about adding a little bit of soil to that, to level that out so that it drains better. Number six, water franchise with Lewis County. So if you remember, part of our renegotiation of our water franchise agreement, we were requesting that Lewis County, please turn off water at our request for failure to pay sewer bills. They denied that. And I asked them to reconsider and they denied it again. And so that is that. The new franchise agreement should be coming soon for your consideration. But they will not work with us on our delinquent sewer bills because so there will be a couple of actions council can take as far as that's concerned. That will be something to do at a later date. Council reports. Does the city council have anything to report?
I would just like to say thank you to Reggie for the awesome fireworks this week. That was, the city just loved it. It was, it was fun. It's fun for everybody.
Thank you, Jason.
I saw John out today. He was scoping a ditch, a couple of ditches.
It's the A Street one.
Yep, going across. And I was talking to those two. And who's the guy that brings the camera out?
That's Lauren's, what's Lauren's last name? Can't remember.
His name's Lauren.
Stevenson. He's with Evergreen World Water. They're a nonprofit and we can call them to assist with things like that regarding storm water and wastewater.
A lot.
If they come down and they help out, it doesn't cost the city anything.
Yeah, which is very nice. And he was saying that what we should do, because I asked him if he found the big hole going to the sewer yet. And he said what we should do is get everything scoped and reported on, which would cost us quite a bit, but at least we would have a.
Idea of what we need to do.
Yeah, an idea of what we need to do and all of our issues.
That could be a possibility. Part of that latest, the latest COVID relief funds that the city got can go to waste water and or storm water. And so we could, if council wanted to, that could be one of the options that we consider when it comes time to.
I think we should put it on the agenda for future, start working on that because it's amazing how much time I see John and that guy scoping this little section and that little section and that little section.
And just to add to that, the outflow of the city that goes past the restaurant is still plugged and we're still waiting for that to be unplugged.
Right, yeah.
So.
All right. Any other council reports? Randy, you had something?
I was wondering, what did the water, the county give any reason for denial?
So their reason is not unfounded. They consider their, the water utility and the sewer utility to be two completely, completely separate entities, which they are. And they will not shut off someone's utility when they are in compliance with their payment, which is the water side of things. So.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
I'd say what I might be a legal issue.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that, because we were dealing with their attorney working with them. And I was hoping that their attorney would have an alternative for us, something, some type of agreement that could be worked out, but they were not willing to do anything.
That would change. Later.
Yes, there are other options. Any other council reports? Agenda approval. We do have one item to add to the agenda. Or it will be, and what's the right, excuse me, the right way of wording this line item?
It would be council to consider approving Resolution 14, 2021.
Resolution 14, 2021. Council to consider Resolution 14, 2021. This would be the Elwood variance application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for July 8th, 2021 with the addition of Resolution 14, 2021.
There was a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with the addition of Resolution 14, 2021 consideration. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love Lady. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I can't vote for it. I'm gonna have to say no because I don't even know what it's about. We weren't allowed to come to the planning committee meeting for some reason. We're not allowed to hear what they had to say about this. So I'm not gonna vote on something. I'm gonna have to vote no on it.
The reason why you as a, as a city council person weren't allowed to attend the planning committee portion of the public hearing was because of state law. As a deciding member, as the final deciding member of the variance application at, at this council meeting, you are not allowed to attend the first part of that process as it's a quasi judicial.
Okay, but I'm not voting for it. I don't know what it's about.
Well, that's why, because at at that time, there will be an entire script that will be read regarding the variance application with all of the details. And also, the planning committee's recommendation presented to you at that time, along with those details, so that you can make your decision then.
And so what is this resolution about then?
This is the resolution.
Oh, my God, my God.
That would either approve or deny their application. So you will have the opportunity to either approve or deny their application based on the findings of fact.
Okay.
This is similar to the other two variants that the city's done over the last two years.
Yeah, well, see, I'm not in on all the side meetings that goes on where you guys know what's going on. I don't have a clue what's happening here. So, okay, if that's the way it goes, I'll vote for it. Yes. Is that better?
Let's take the vote again. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Approve the agenda.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes approval.
I'm a motion that we approve city council meeting minutes for June 24th, 2021.
There was a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes as written from June 24th, 2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovely. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion for voucher approval amended end of June 2021 of $78. June total of $68,581.28, 1st of July, 2021, $68,307.05.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love Lady. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports from Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. The June law enforcement, for June total for the month of June. During the month of June, we have a total of 324 citizen contacts. There were no calls actually on shift when a deputy was dedicated to this event since later. There were 18 traffic stops resulting in six distractions, a bunch of warnings. Total, there were a total of 16 calls per service again, none of them was actually deputy in Vader, and one arrest, and that was a criminal citation for it after. And the items will return. Any questions? I'll say June again, just figure that out.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to city business. City business number one, council to consider tractor purchase. Hopefully you all got to see the different quotes for fairly similar machines. I think the Bobcat quote came in late this week, so hopefully you all got a chance to see that. And Diane, you did get a chance to send out a breakdown of where those funds were gonna come from. Okay, thank you. I think I did. Maybe I took some out of this.
No. Can you step it down for me?
Okay, thank you.
Start off, I think we ought to go with the Kubota. That is through the Kubota dealer in Chilis, right?
That's correct. Yeah, that's the one Raffa Bishop wrote.
Yeah, I, I just got a tractor and I needed parts for it. And I went to every one of the tractor dealers up there looking for something. And they like dug into their back shop and were very helpful to get it done. When other guys didn't even want to get up off their desk.
Yeah, I can say when I, when I walked in there to, to get this quote from them, they were very customer service oriented. I liked the fact that they had a shop right there on site, just 15 minutes up the road. It's pretty, pretty advantageous. But it's not my dis.
I'm with Mike. I'm like a better, they're supposed to be better. The Bobcat is gonna be our cheaper option, but we don't know how these are gonna last long term. And the John Deere would be nice, but that's like buying a Ferrari when you have a pent tail budget. So it just, it's gonna break. It's gonna have issues. We're gonna have expensive parts.
Do you? Oh, sure. Yeah, I had sent, yeah, on Monday, I'd sent, Sunday, Monday, I'd sent a, an idea off to council and, and, and the clerk treasurer. And I was, I've been out of town up until 3 o'clock today. So catching up right here. Um, so we had $8,000 in the budget for urban design standards update. We have hopefully a $20,000 grant coming from the Economic Development Commission through the county. And so that will not only cover the 8,000 that we intended to expend, but also the other several chapters that we have for urban design standards. So we should be able to update our entire urban design standards off grant money. And I just got a, I just got a phone call this week from the county attorney about that. And he said it, he thought it was going through this week. I just need to follow up on that. But anyway, so that 8,000 that we expended there, that we had budgeted, we're not gonna need. And so in this suggestion, we have about half of that, $4,076.33 going towards the tractor. Tractor maintenance, we originally had 7,000 in the budget for that. We had not expended any of that yet this year. And so we're gonna use that entire thing, all $7,000 towards the tractor. Insurance. So our insurance was going to cover $20,000 minus a $5,000 deductible. So in essence, we get an extra $15,000 there. Sewer equipment replacement. From the sewer fund. So if you remember, we have different, different funds for different things. You have the general fund, the street fund, sewer fund. And so as is traditional with shared expenses, for instance, a lawnmower that gets used partially at the park and partially at the sewer plant, partially on streets and things like that. We don't, we'll use a percentage of the total purchase price from the sewer fund. And so in this case, was it 30%? 20%. So 20% of the, of the purchase price of the vehicle, we can put towards the sewer equipment replacement fund. So that will be $9,000. And the excavator itself, so on this, on these tractors, on the model that they're talking about, the backhoe attachment itself runs about $10,000. And so part of those latest COVID relief funds that the city got, the 94,000 and change, we can use, use that for water, sewer, or broadband expenses. So in this case, the excavator was gonna be used pretty much exclusively either on storm water or wastewater purposes. And so we can expense all $10,000 of that from that COVID relief fund that we got. So in essence, it's a grant. The entire tractor was about 35. Is that correct?
45.
35 for the tractor and then 45 total when you include the backup. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay. So it's coming from a variety of different sources. Some of the, a lot of the things were budgeted already. Some things we budgeted for and we got grant money to cover. And so, and then others like the COVID relief fund and the insurance money is all kind of bound money that we, that we weren't gonna originally have at the beginning of the year. So really, the only thing that's coming out of the budget that we hadn't planned for is the 9,000 for this sewer equipment replacement. Sorry, I have my phone unmuted, so our city planner could call us during the planning committee meeting. Anyway, so that extra 9,000, which we did have in the budget for sewer replacement items, so. I don't have a, I don't have a backup plan, but it's happening. It's happening. I did. I'll talk to you later if you want, but it's happening. Anyway, so that's the money side of things. We have it. It's not gonna hurt us at all.
I make a motion that we purchase the Kubota tractor at $45,076.33.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to purchase the Kubota for $45,076.33. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love Lady. Discussion.
So that, you guys say the Bobcat is nowhere near the tractor Kubota is.
The Bobcat doesn't have the rig of liability because they just haven't been around as long. They only just brought them back the last couple of years.
Is it basically the same equipment?
Joe, you'd have that.
Where's the, where's the Bobcat?
The Bobcat's like a toy. Make sure this.
Yeah.
And so is the John Deere, basically.
Kubota, I've heard it's superior. I'm just trying to get some feedback.
The Bobcat's like.
You're talking about.
And the John Deere is like the millionaire's version. We're kind of in the middle ground there.
The Bobcat dealer is in Olympia.
So that may not be all the entire pop, because they don't have delivery and any of the other stuff in the, in the quote. PDI, plate, all that.
On the Bobcat.
It's missing some other charges. Self tax as well, yeah.
So it's not as, so if you start adding the tax onto those numbers, you can see.
Okay, I, I just made a clarification.
I agree. I think we should get the best machine for our money. And I think the Kubota would be the one, so.
Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Kubota purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jason, did I hear you?
Yes, I said aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, city business, council to approve Rogland's application for payment number one in the amount of $510,429.36. This, of course, will be reimbursed through the various wastewater treatment plant grant funding that the city did acquire.
I make a motion to approve Rogland's application for payment number one in the total of $510,429.36.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovely to approve the Rogland's application for payment number one as written. Do we have a second?
One second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall for their discussion.
Have they done that much work yet?
They have. Last I checked, they were on the last pond worth of dredging and they had the headworks almost complete. And what else?
So in the scope, this is, their first draw is timed, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll be making monthly reports like this, requests for payment. And just so you know, Civil West are gonna be reviewing everything they're building to make. For and verify that the equipment they're saying they purchase is on site. So we can feel pretty confident in this request.
Yeah, Civil West has a representative onsite at all times while work is happening, watching what's going on, taking pictures, making sure that they're building it to, to the spec that we approved. And then Civil West does review all of these payments before they finally come through. There's a lot of eyes that look on this, look at this first. Question?
Did we put anything in for the damages on A Street?
So there is, yes, there is contingency in there that they will fix whatever street damage occurs because of the large equipment going back and forth on A Street. A Street was damaged already, which is one of the reasons why we didn't fix it leading up to this over the last couple of years, because we were just gonna beat the heck out of it again. We've actually been talking to ecology about perhaps using some of these excess funds that work, the city's gonna have, as we have more grant funding that we're, that we're gonna utilize. Use some of that to maybe enhance what we can do as far as fixing the streets concerned. So we're looking at that, too.
It's those big trucks running three at a time down here.
Yeah, it's, it's built in, it's built in that they'll, that they'll fix whatever new damage they create, but they're not going to fix whatever old damage was there. However, we're hoping to change that with our excess funds. So. I believe we had a first and a second.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving Rogland's application for payment number one in the amount of $510,429.36, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to city business, item number three, council to consider Resolution 14-2021, the Elwood variance application. So.
I am gonna go.
Yes, in fact, both you and Mr. Hall need to excuse themselves. Bear with me while I follow the script from the attorney. The council will next hold a hearing on the Elwood variance application. This will be a quasi judicial hearing based on the record created by the planning committee. This is a closed record decision and no new information will be allowed. In accordance with the city's code, notice of this hearing was provided to the applicant and to nearby property owners. Tonight, we will consider the planning committee's recommendation on the application, and we may hear argument from the applicant and the planning director. Following argument, we will deliberate on the committee's recommendation. Unlike most meetings, tonight, the city council is sitting in a quasi judicial manner. This means that the council members are sitting as judges to judge the variance application. As judges, the council needs to be impartial, weigh the facts, listen to the testimony, and apply the standards under the Vader code for when a variance can be granted. This also means that the council needs to meet certain standards to sit as judges, including the appearance of fairness standard to be fair to, to be fair and to also appear fair. Council members also must disclose any, disclose any contacts that may have, they may have had with any party about this application. These are called ex parte contacts. For appearance of fairness, what this means is, do you have any relationship with any party to this application that would create a conflict or make it seem that you cannot be fair in deciding the application? In Vader, we have two planning committee members who are married to city council members. While this is not an issue in legislative matters, it does create an appearance, a pureness of fairness issue for quasi judicial matters. Therefore, to avoid an appearance of fairness problem, and as no council, no members of the planning committee recuse themselves, two members of the city council will recuse themselves, leaving a quorum of three council members. Council members, Mike Parsons and Randy Hall, will be recusing themselves from this decision. That way, there is no family relationship between decision makers at the different levels of the administrative hearing process. Apart from what I just mentioned, does any other member of the city Apart from what I just mentioned, does any other member of the city council have any appearance, appearance, appearance of fairness issue or any ex parte contacts that they would like to disclose at this time pertaining to the application for the Elwood variance application? For ex parte contacts, what this means is you have had any contact with any party, meaning the applicant, their lawyer, or any other person about this application. I would put onto the record that all council members have had contact with the city clerk with regard to the meeting materials, meeting procedures, and scheduling. Now is the time to disclose any contacts on the record. If you do not have any, you can simply say, I have no contacts report at this time. So I'll start with Mr. Daly. Mr. Daly, do you have any contacts to disclose?
No contacts at this time.
Ms. Love Lady?
I have no contacts at this time.
Ms. Rogers?
I have no contact.
Excellent. Since there has been no challenge on appearance of fairness grounds, the council members are now ready to proceed to the next portion of the hearing. All right, everyone already left the room that needed to leave the room. All right. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion by Ms. Love Lady, open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. We moved and seconded that we have an open public hearing. Any discussion? Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Daly?
Jason?
Mr. Daly, did you vote?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open. This is not a general public comment period. The period is solely for the purpose of taking argument from the parties, the applicant and the planning department. No new information may be provided, and the argument is to be based solely on the record created by the planning committee. Does the applicant wish to present argument to the council? I don't think the applicant is here, and they're not online. Is the applicant online?
He was not able to attend the second one, Joe.
Thank you, Stephanie. The applicant is not present. All right, following the applicant, the planning director may all, may also make argument to the city council. Stephanie, are you prepared to give the planning director's side?
Do that if you would like.
Seeing as our planner is not here, I would appreciate it.
Sure, you just need me to go over the staff report?
Please.
Okay, hold on. Didn't know I was doing that. I'll go get it.
I appreciate you being flexible.
No problem. Okay, this is for Foley variance application, VAD 2105V. It's applicant Roger Foley doing business under Elwood Holdings. This address is at 901 Main Street. There is two variants that is being requested, a 20-foot to a 10-foot in the rear yard setback, and, I'm sorry, the front yard property line from 20 to 10, and the rear yard setback from 15 to 10. The setbacks are because of a home that was built in 1920s, mostly in that time didn't have setbacks. So the previous home was in the city right of ways, and they did not know that when they did the, the demolition on the home. And so they have a structural report that was submitted with the best possible home that they could build that was feasible. The footprint is 1452 square feet. That is 1,009 square feet of living space and a 443 square foot is the garage. All of the conditions, criteria A, B, C, and D were met. Do I have to do that all again, Joe?
I don't think, does the council have the staff report in front of them? They don't have this.
No, do we?
Yeah, it should be part of your packet.
We're handing it out right now.
Okay. I'll just do a general. So criteria A, there are four things that have to be met to consider the application. Criteria A should not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations upon uses of other properties in the vicinity and zone, in zone which the property on behalf of which the application was filed. Basically, just saying if there's a special privilege. And if it is consistent with the limitations of other uses in the vicinity. Oh, my battery's going low. I'm gonna have to plug in here. The applicant meets criteria A, has determined no special privileges. Criteria B is variance as necessary because of a special circumstance relating to the size, shape, locations of the surroundings of the subject property to provide it, which use rights and privileges permitted to other properties in the vicinity and the zone in which the subject property is located. Yes, at 40 feet, the lot is too narrow to accommodate an average-sized home and still meets, to still meet the 20-foot yard setback. So criteria B has been met. Criteria C, the granting of such variance will not be materially detrimental to public welfare or interest of property or improvement in the vicinity and zone in which the subject property is situated. Meaning would granting of variance become detrimental to the public welfare, interest of property improvement in the vicinity? No, there is no reason to believe it would be interest to other property owners, which all were giving this, all the property, neighboring properties were given this information. Criteria D, the hardship assertion to the applicant is not the result of the applicant's or the owner's action, is the hardship being asserted of the applicant's own actions. No, this, this applicant is not the one that built the previous house, so did not create this hardship. And so it has not been caused by the applicant. A lot to mention, it's historical and was not caused by any recent boundary line adjustments. The house plan being proposed is the minimum possible square foot for a functional single family dwelling, so the applicant meets criteria D. So the recommend, the recommendation from our planning committee, or from our planner, was to grant the variance from 20 feet to, I'm sorry, the staff recommendation is the applicant for variance to modify the front yard setback for this R1 property from 20 to 15 to be granted. It's actually, I think there's a mistype in it because it's, it should be 20 to 10 and 15 to 10.
I would like to make a motion that we grant this application variance. I don't have the number in front of me.
Please hold on, Jason. There's more script to read.
Oh.
All right, thank you, thank you, Stephanie. Hearing no more argument from the applicant or the planning director. May I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
No motion by Ms. Love Lady to, to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to know how you've got all this typed up and everything. I didn't see any notification of a public hearing, a council meeting. And the planning committee met just this evening before this meeting, and this is all typed up, ready to go, and it's a done deal. I mean, I don't see anybody knows anything even about this, especially me.
Okay. So. Absolutely. Well, the, the, the planning committee public hearing was quoted in the paper, and it was also sent to all of the applicants in the area. The, the council public hearing is, does not need to be advertised as it doesn't take any extra input from the public. So where the planning committee public hearing does hear from the public, the, which is why it needs to be advertised, the public knows it in advance. The, this is not your traditional public hearing where the council is hearing from the public. I know it sounds odd, but it's.
Yeah.
It's the way it is. It should make sense, though, that, that since we're not hearing from the public, it's only the applicant and the planning director. We don't have to advertise because.
Oh, it shouldn't happen.
They know about it.
Still, though, I just got this information.
Well, and, and that's.
And that's supposed to be good enough.
That's what's the way it's supposed to be because you're not supposed to be able to review it ahead of time because if you did, then that would.
Make you have.
Defeat the whole purpose of the thing. But, but the, but the good, the, the positive of this is that there's no rush, and there's plenty of time for you to review everything right now. But the motion on the table right now is to close the public hearing and move on to the deliberation stage. Do you have further comment on the closing of the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, Jason, I didn't hear you. Jason, what was your vote for?
Aye.
Close it or to?
Aye.
Yes or no?
Yes.
There we go.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Deliberation. We will now begin deliberation. We need to walk through the recommendations of the planning committee, which addresses each of the four conditions that must be met for the variance. So this is where council can take the time, discuss it, look at the four conditions, agree or disagree with the planning committee. Or just. The note on here says you can discuss each condition and decide how the applicant does or does not meet the condition, or if applicable, you can simply agree with the planning committee as they've been thorough and that you can agree with the recommendation. Council should review it so that they can understand what it is they're looking at. So I can, we've done, we've done a couple of these over the, over the years. Once last year for the Alpine Court variance, so that they can build a home on a small lot that, and the lot was created by them. That was the most recent one. So. So to reiterate what the variance is on the application, they need to have a sma, slightly smaller setback.
Joe, I, I know the property very well, and it is a very small piece of property, and their neighbors are the, are the donkeys and the railroad tracks, so I'm, I'm okay with this variance.
I don't think we mailed the donkeys and asked their opinion.
Okay, so, well.
I can confirm I did not.
Stephanie did not mail the donkey.
Right.
No, I think they meant she mailed the property owners directly.
I think we should go with what the planning committee and the planner is saying because with variances, it's kind of cut and dry on if we can allow them or not.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And did you, you all, yeah, the photos are attached.
Yeah.
So you can see the small lot size and where they're putting the home. If you look at the, where Main Street itself is located, the, Main Street's one of those streets where the city's right of way is like 80 feet wide, and Main Street's 20 feet wide. And so even with reducing the setback on the property itself, the home is still going to be 40 feet from the road, 40 plus feet from the road.
So it's not going to be in the city right of way?
No.
At all?
No, it's still not in the right of way. Even if they do that, the home is still, the home is still totally on their parcel. It's just closer to their property line than what it would normally be allowed.
But with the angle of the parcel, it kind of almost makes sense like it would have to be.
The old home was in the city's right of way.
The old home was on the city's right of way, and the new home will not be on the city's right of way. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. For the reason we needed the variance.
And we still have the 80 feet, right?
Right, yeah. The, the, the home is not going to touch the city right of way whatsoever. It's going to be on, still, still on their parcel. Can I take a question? I didn't think I could.
That should be coming up, though, right?
I don't think so.
Doesn't?
No, not this time. Counsel, further counsel deliberation?
I say we go with this.
And I'll refer you back to the page where it discusses criteria A, B, C, and D. We base our approval or denial, denial on those four conditions, and according to the planning committee and the planning director, they have met all four conditions.
Do I need to make a motion?
I'd like to approve the application for the variance for 901 Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the variance. Mr. Daly, could you rephrase your motion in the form of referencing Resolution 142021? The resolution 1421 is the actual resolution that speaks about the approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution 142021 for 901 Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve Resolution 142021, approving the application for the variance by Elwood Holdings at 901 Main. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded on Ms. Love Lady. Further discussion?
Oh, by the way, Joe, I will ask the don, I will ask the donkeys to make sure it's okay with them, but.
Thank you. Right, hearing no other discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 142021, approving the variance by Elwood Holdings, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The applicant and members of the public should not contact, should not contact or communicate with any members of the city council regarding the application until such time as the city council's decision becomes final under law. You may contact members of the council on issues unrelated to the application. Members of the city council should avoid ex parte contact or communication with the applicant or with any person favoring or opposing this application about this decision until after the city council's decision becomes final. That's in the script. Okay, that's the end of the city business. Moving on to public comment.
Janet Charlton, 626 Street. First, I'd like to congratulate you on your new tractor. I think that's awesome, and thank you to Reggie and Linda for the beautiful fireworks that we had on July 4th. It was awesome. Tonight, I'm here to talk to the council about my frustration with the lack of police in Vader. This has been a frustration for me since we lost our police force. It was my driving force when I was elected on the council. I talked about it on the council. I tried to get it when I was on the council, and for some reason back then, it was always lack of money, lack of money, lack of money. And for some reason back then, it was always lack of money, lack of money, lack of money. So I'm here to ask. Did we hear our other members back?
They could come back in for public comment if they're still out there.
They have option.
They, they often.
So I have to hear my spiel?
We'll, we'll relate to it.
Okay, okay. So I'm asking one, you know, maybe just one council member to really start investigating how we could come up with our own police force. Crime is on the rise all over the country. Washington State, Vader is no different. Our town is growing and along with growth comes crime. I think on a daily basis, we have crime here. I think we just don't see it. I certainly hear about it on Facebook and I probably represent seventy-five percent of this community that wants a police force. Nothing against the sheriff's department, you know, they're here for their whatever amount of time they're contracted for eighty thousand plus dollars. However, I have drove around many times and I come and go to work every day and I see where the sheriffs are. I've seen them parked at the park many times. I've seen them parked at three quarters many times. Tonight, I see this officer parked at the bus bar. No offense. And I'm sure their thought is, you know, the presence of having a police is enough. It's not enough. We have people's homes getting broken into. We have death going on out of people's yards. We have countless animals running loose in Vader. It's like there's just lawlessness everywhere you turn. And I'm not saying we need to be nitpicky about it, but it's like, I can't even walk my dog on a leash because we do have a leash law without getting approached by someone's dog that's decided not to leash their dog. I have neighbors that sleep all day and party all night with their music blaring. At, you know, one or two in the morning, I get up at four thirty to go to work. I, I don't even go to bed till ten because I just don't require a lot of sleep. But when you do go to bed and you have to get up to work and you hear it with the TV on, you hear boom, boom, and it's across the alley. I mean, it's not right, you know, next to my home. In fact, it happened, I don't know, three times last week alone. And to the point where I got up and I was going to go to their home and I thought, no, I'm not doing that. And so I drove around Vader looking for a police officer. It was ten at night, not at five in the afternoon or wherever, whenever they're here. I mean, the crime usually happens ten and after, it seems to, because they're all sleeping during the day and not all night. Couldn't find anyone. Then I tried to find the non-emergency because I don't feel like I want to call nine one one even though they say, you know, go ahead. I looked on our website, the Vader website. I could not find it anymore. I don't know if it is on there, but I've looked and looked and looked. So needless to say, I didn't sleep much that night. But it's like, I really think when we're paying eighty thousand plus and I think that we do have the money. I think we, I think the citizens of Vader are important enough to come up with money to have their safety covered. Because I don't feel safe and I'm sure there's a lot of single or elderly people that live alone that don't feel safe. I, I just don't feel safe in Vader anymore. There's too many. There's too many things going on. I mean, I feel safe with my, I mean, I do, just because who knows what's going to happen, but I'm asking the state council tonight for someone on the council to take this on. And, or even go out and call people, whatever you have to do, to start moving the ball forward. So I'm not dropping this. The next step is going to be, I'm going to advertise it on Facebook. Please come to join me at the next council meeting if you want to voice your opinion about the police department. Or then the next thing will be, I will go to newspapers or we need a police department in Vader, whether that's interlocal, that worked before, whatever it is, we need to do something before something really tragic happens here. We have a lot of new, less than desirable people roaming our streets. We have homeless people here now. I mean, it's just, it's, it's all over the place. So that's, that's all I had. That's all I had about, I just asking to go to council, someone, someone to take the ball on.
I have a couple of questions if you're done. So you mentioned interlocal, so that was going to be one of my, my one question. I was wondering if you were interested in perhaps a partnership with other local cities?
Yeah, I've worked before.
Okay. And then the other one was, would you be interested in an expansion of the sheriff's department role? For instance, we only budget a certain amount of hours a week. We could increase our budget for that and have more patrol time by just simply increasing our budget through the, through the sheriff's department.
One reason I say I'm not for that is because I think we can get more for our buck with our own police department, number one. And number two, they don't know the community because I'm sure they have, well, I mean, I know they do. They have different officers that are here. They are not just, you know, they don't go to the little parade and they don't know the people. They don't go in the store. They don't know the people. They don't know your kids. Well, I don't know. We've always had, I mean, I pretty much have grown up here, we've always had town cops and they knew your kids. They knew your dog. They knew your car. They, you know, with spotlight down your alley and they would go to the little parade and have coffee and they'd go to the school and have lunch with the kids. They knew their community. They were part of the community. And people weren't afraid to approach them and talk to them about whatever's going on or they weren't afraid. I think there's no personal connection with the sheriff department because there's a different one every time. I mean, I've called personally myself last year many times about the goats and every time I got four different sheriffs in a matter of a couple of weeks. And one was like, I'm going over there and write in ticket. The next one's like, well, there's really nothing, you know, you can do and they'll take them to court and they'll say they owe you money, but they ate my trees. They'll say they, they owe you money, but you really can't collect it. So, you know, I mean, it just, every time you get a different one, it's a different story. One has, you know, I just think our own police department is more personal for our community.
It's good.
You know, I think we need more personal, I mean, our school's gone up. That held our community together. And now I think we need to bring back, start bringing some of these back, like
Good.
starting with the Fourth of July.
Well, I know the sheriff's department contract is up at the end of this year and so that contract will come up for renewal with council this year. And so it could be a good time for council to look into that. If that's something that they're interested in doing.
Whoever, plenty of time from now until then to, I mean, whoever's writing the grants is doing a great job to finding all kinds of grant money for our town and there are tons of grants out there for your police things, right?
Probably if you were to look, we just need someone to look for
Yeah.
Some grant, police grant. Probably for equipment.
Yeah.
This law.
Exactly. Because I know that will be a cost, will be a car. I mean, that's, I think that's how we got the dog originally, was a big grant. When we had our, but you know, got the dog. I think there's all kinds, probably not to pay a fee for a police officer, but
Right.
Yeah, so I'm hoping.
There should be grants.
Right. I'm hoping that between now and the end of the year. And like I said, it's not me against the sheriff's department. I know it's not the personally. I think he's a great guy. I just think we need our own police department. And, you know, even if we have to do where they patrol, you know, if we have, I don't, before the problem has been, well, if you only have one, you don't have a backup. But then you have when I provided ones, now one of those ones called it, like they're training.
Reserves.
Reserves, yeah. We used to have reserves here all the time. We have five or six reserves. It would be odd when a cop, you know, when a regular cop could be here. So I think there's different options. People just never take the time to look into it or they see, you know, they go, well, you know, we just get the sheriff. It's easier and whatever, but easy's over. We need safety, people. We need safety and blah, blah, blah.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I want to ask you a question. You want one?
Go ahead, Linda.
Have you noticed homeless people late at night and early in the morning walking down your street with their backpacks?
Yes, I have. Me too, yes.
Every morning in front of my house.
Not every morning, but I have seen them at night and I have seen them early in the morning when I'm going to work.
And I have no idea where they're going. They're going down past our house. I think they're going into that brush, trash hole over there with the trailers and
Yeah.
I don't know what other property it is, but it's been empty for years and it rugs rats and homeless.
Yeah.
I've seen them walking out.
Scary.
There's one with laundry in the car still there. He's filthy dirty and he's loading his pickup bag and a big army backpack.
If there is
Every morning.
There's someone squatting on properties that don't belong to them, you should let this gentleman know right here.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I can attest to that.
The problem is you can't you actually can't accuse them of squatting unless you see them actually in a building. Because we went through that with Lee's property across the street that was empty for five years. We had five years of squatters. Fire department had to go down with one of them after I ran over to rescue his little daughter. He was tired of the kite on something and he had thrown everything out in the driveway. Furniture, appliances, everything, and pouring gas on it and lighting it up with his two-year-old daughter right there. I snatched her away from the smoke and I said, I'm going to call the police department and the fire department. Don't bother them. They're on their way. Somebody already beat ya.
Well, we had those squatters in Sharon's house for a couple of years and the sheriff, they couldn't do anything about it. And they finally busted them for something, drugs or something, but they, they were living there rent-free for a couple of years.
Yes, I knew when the folks were
We've gotten your, got, we got the point. Thank you. There's some other folks that wanted to talk tonight.
I'm duty could go.
Can't follow that.
With the point.
Judy Costello, seven oh six B Street, Vader. Citywide yard sale will be August the seventh from eight to question mark. It's on Facebook. It's all over. Samantha's going to do an article for me.
Yeah, I'll put some stuff in for you.
Um, I'd like to do a brief update on a six and a half hour arbitration on June the thirtieth that I attended. I'll not be discussing the actual details of the arbitration. But I would like to share with everyone some of the things that I observed while there for six and a half hours. And the first thing I observed.
Just one moment. You've talked to your council about this and she knows that it's okay?
No, I have not. But what I'm going to say has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
It's my personal feelings.
Okay, I just wanted to just don't want to get anyone in trouble, so.
Well.
Okay, go for it.
Well, my personal thoughts are, my personal thoughts are on this is that the mayor and the council are no longer in charge of the city of Vader. It appears that you have turned everything over to the city attorney. And I want all of these guys out here to know this, that everything you do is thousands of dollars to the city attorney. You have to call them every day for all kinds of unknown things. The, the bill is outrageous alone. And these folks don't know this and it's public record. This city has spent thirty thousand dollars fighting me over a stop work order. And that is public record and that is all of the attorney bills that have been totaled since this started in November. I'm happy to bring the public record that I have in and show you the calculations. So I just want the public to know, everybody talks about this and I don't ever get to say, I have to sit back there quiet. And, and none of you know what really is going on because nobody discusses it. And if they do, I don't know that they do it in an executive session. I mean, I don't know what's talked about among you guys or how you're all handling this or what you know or don't know. I'm disappointed, Randy, in my part here because that is a large amount of money to be spending on somebody. So that's kind of what I wanted to share tonight with the public. So that everybody kind of knows that I'm out here trying to figure out how to stop this and solve this. And it doesn't appear, in my opinion, that we are getting very far. So that is what I wanted you to know, that this continues on. The mayor made a comment that the city insurance would be taking over my case. I have a superior court case and I have a federal court case that are both active. And yet the city attorney is still involved in this. It is not just the insurance. So this community is still paying money. So that is all I wanted to say. I don't think I stepped on anybody's toes or rights and that was my opinion and what I said was public record and fact. Thank you.
So there are, there are some inconsistencies in, in that report. The city has not spent thirty thousand dollars of its own money on code enforcement regarding a particular property. I want to be careful what I say because we're actually not supposed to talk about too many things at the very, at this, at this moment. So we have not spent that much. Also, as far as talking to the attorney, a- as you said, again, in your, in your example, you said, when we don't know things, we talk to the attorney. You're right. When we don't know things, we talk to the attorney. That way, when we get sued, we don't lose. So that's why we talk to the attorney. And it does cost money to enforce codes. You know, when you, when a city or a county has a building department, it's not a money-making endeavor, right? We have city, we have codes and building codes and things like that so that when someone does work on their house, it doesn't burn down their neighbor's house, right? Right? So, you know, if someone installs, this is this unrelated example. If someone installs a wood fireplace in their home and does it incorrectly and does not get inspected and it burns their house down, it'll burn your house down too because it's right next door. This is why we have codes, to make sure everyone is upgrading their homes properly. And so does that cost more sometimes than what we get back in building permit fees? Absolutely. But that's the way it works, right? This is, this is how, this is how government works. This is why there's an international residential building code. And the city has the same, and we adopted the same exact codes as Lewis County has. So if, if the city didn't do this, Lewis County would be doing the same thing and requiring the exact same thing. And so it's unfortunate when there are disagreements in permits, but when that happens, the city has to defend itself and protect the folks around it. So you know, I can't talk about specifics, but in this case, you know, in, in, in a short amount of time, I think all this, all the details will be public record and everyone can find out themselves what went on. So Janet, you had a question?
Well, if thirty thousand wasn't spent, how much has it spent?
Fifteen thousand, correct?
Fifteen thousand today, today?
Last time, last time we checked, it was fifteen thousand. That was, that was last week of last week. Mr. Shows?
I have looked at your records. You seem like more than that, more than fifteen.
No, please.
I haven't, I looked at your records. And is all the like all the roofs, are they covered equal or like if you go over here, they get this roof done and don't get a inspection on it? Is every roof that's been done in Vader been inspected? No?
They should have been.
They should have, but they haven't. There's people here in this town.
There are folks that speed down the road as well that don't get caught by the police department. That doesn't make it right. There are people that speed on the, on the open freeways as well. They violate the speed limit, but they don't get caught either. That doesn't make it right.
No, no.
They don't tax taxpayers thirty thousand dollars.
And they were never inspected. And they were never inspected.
Like, I can't speak for things that didn't happen. I don't...
And it didn't happen. It didn't.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have examples of things that didn't happen.
Y'all didn't go back to his truck.
As far as I'm aware, if we've got our, we've got our active, we have an active permit, they've been inspected. It should have been sign-off. You could probably ask for all those permits people have, and you can see that the building inspector has signed off on them.
I'd like to see that.
Come ask for it. Public record.
I haven't got public records on...
Wish I could address more at this time, but I probably have said, done more than I should have already, just because of legal, legal recommendations, so... Other, any other public comment? I think there was a third.
Yes, Linda?
Linda Newton, 1024 B Street. I've been listening to this permit thing back and forth, back and forth. And, you know, I heard way more than $15,000 for this permit. Started out as an $85 permit, okay? In this case, I will eliminate Judy Costello, applied for the permits. She has applied for permits for every single thing she's done to that old home. She's done everything by the book. And, you know, this is just, it's just gone way beyond. It's clear up in federal court, for God's sake. What's the matter with you people? You're costing me money that I don't appreciate. And the rest of the parent Vader also, I'm sure, they wouldn't like to hear these kind of figures from what's happening. And the only winner in this whole thing is the lawyer that's getting the $15,000 or the $30,000, or whatever it is. The lawyer's making out, not the city. And I don't know of anybody that has, you know, put in the upgrades to an old home and trying to better Vader than to be. I just, I just think it's harassment, as far as what I see in here. It's harassment. She's, this isn't the only permit. Every time you turn around, she applies for a permit, there's something goes on. They don't do it to anybody else in this town. I know a lot of stuff that goes on. Like you say, a lot of stuff goes on. Nobody comes in here and gets permits. Nobody gets harassed. Nobody gets anything sent to. But I hear this over and over and over. And again, I say, I feel like this is like harassment, like there's somebody in the city, California, in the city somewhere that has a vendetta there, and that's the way of being evil. The only thing I can think of. This has gone way beyond what it should. And like I said, the only winner is the lawyer. The only winner. And then I have one other concern. It's Vader is being ordered $187,000 for COVID relief money. And I understand Vader's already gotten $80,000 of that. I talked to the state. And I want to see some transparency and some accountability, big time, with that kind of money. Law enforcement, $187,000 is coming into Vader. There's the money right there.
Well, sometimes those grants, you know, is...
There is going to be...
I can address that in a minute.
There's 66 things that you can, can use that money for. Water, sewer, broadband. There are 66 total things, that's what the state told me. And they were still in the process of going over all of those, what you can use the money for. But she told me there's 66 big items that you can use it for.
Subcategories for each of those three.
Right, right. So, you know, like I said, I like to see transparency and accountability for that kind of money. That's a lot of money. So, but thank you for listening to me, and all I have to say for now.
I can say with those latest, the latest COVID relief money, all of those expenses that come out of that have to go through the Department of Treasury. That's where we go through, correct? And so all of it gets audited through the Department of Treasury. So you can't just spend it on anything you want. It needs to be on, on, in their list of criteria. You know, at a high level, like you said, water, stormwater, sewer, broadband, that kind of thing. But they did create, they did make it to be kind of a gray, kind of a gray requirement, because they do want it to be flexible, right? If they, if they put too many requirements on it, cities won't be able to use it the way they want. So that's why they have, they don't have exact lists of exactly what you can spend it on. So, for instance, tonight, the council voted to use $10,000 of that on the backhoe attachment for the tractor, so that we could take care of our own, some of our own stormwater and sewer-related ditching expenses. So hopefully you saw that. Any other public comment?
Joe, I also just wanted to address the other, I just wanted to say, there's also been three other...
Stephanie, can you add your stuff, yourself, please?
Yes, sorry. Stephanie Pelton, deputy clerk. I just wanted to address the part about no one else has been getting stop work orders. I have given out three other stop work orders. All three residents came to the city hall, got into compliance, paid their fee, and been issued their building permit with no additional ramifications.
Thank you for that good information. Hearing no other public comment, elected official comment.
I have a comment.
Absolutely.
Number one, I would appreciate that the public do not include me in the city council. I have tried to stand up for the taxpayers here. I have complained. I have raised holy hell about a lot of things that have happened, and that includes the tractor, the ditches, Judy Costello. And it isn't about Judy Costello. It's about anybody that had bought that house would have gone through the same hell that we have gone through with that. And it hasn't been fair, and I witnessed some of it with my own eyes. And this stuff about not spending $30,000, that is not true. We have spent that, probably more, when you include the inspectors and the engineers and everybody else that has been pulled in on this. It's been ridiculous, and in my opinion, it has been nothing more than a vendetta. And I hope it is over now. And I don't know who won, but the taxpayers of this community lost over this. And it should never happen again. And we should have people that are qualified in the building and planning department that know what they're talking about. And these, just because you don't like somebody doesn't mean it shouldn't be a level playing field. And I'm sick of watching this kind of stuff. I'm done.
Any other elected official comment? Harry Nunn. This meeting is adjourned at 7:23 PM.